All right, I call this March 28, 2024, meeting of the Albemarle County School Board. Back to order, do we have a motion?
We do. I move that the board certified by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing a closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Acuff, seconded by Mr. Page. Could we have a roll call for that, please, Christine?
Mr. Charles Pace?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Graham Page?
Yes.
Dr. Berlin?
Yes.
Ms. Spillman?
Yes.
Chair Lee?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you. Next, we'll have a roll call, starting with Mr. Black.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Josiah Black, School Division Counsel.
Matthew Hawes, Superintendent.
Allison Spillman, at-large representative.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville representative.
Rebecca Berlin, Whitehall representative.
Judy Lee, Rivasna District.
Kaye Acuff, Jack Jewett District.
Graham Page, Millau District.
Chuck Pace, Rio District.
Daphne Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent.
Pat Wolfson, Assistant Superintendent.
Christine Thompson, Clerk of the Board.
Chandra Hayes, Assistant Superintendent.
Claire Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent.
Daryl Mickish, Almaral PD.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Next, we'll be observing a moment of silence, and I wanted to mention the names of two students who have passed, Adam Begley, a senior at Monticello, and Jayden Wadi, a ninth grader at AHS. Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Acuff, seconded by Ms. Spillman and Ms. Osborne. Do we have any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Not opposed? All right, agenda is approved. Next, we have approval of consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
I move to accept the consent agenda as stated in the agenda.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Berlin, seconded by Dr. Acuff. Is there any discussion? Nope, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Consent agenda is approved. Next, we have announcements from the School Board and Superintendent Business.
So I just had just a couple of quick announcements, a couple of shout-outs. One is, and of course, Mr. Bond, Principal at Albemarle, is here tonight. Albemarle High School is celebrating winning a Virginia Music Educators Association Blue Ribbon Award for this school year, and it is the highest award given to schools' music programs in the Commonwealth of Virginia. It recognizes achieved excellence in band, orchestra, and choral performance. All disciplines in a school must receive a rating of superior at assessment to qualify for this award. So that's a really big deal, and Albemarle High School has long been known for its outstanding arts programs, and this is just another feather in the cap of the school. I also want to give a shout-out to Broadus Wood Elementary School. They achieved 100% staff attendance on Tuesday this week, and they join Journey Middle School with Ashby Johnson's here tonight. They had 100% attendance earlier in the year. Hollymead has had 100% attendance, and recently Brownsville had 100% staff attendance. And again, that's a really big deal because we want our employees to take off, to take care of their needs, and to take care of themselves. So whenever a school has 100% staff there, it's, I wouldn't say it's luck, it's just the conditions are right that everybody can be there and have an extra successful day. And what we've started, what we did when Journey perked up earlier in the year, we started bringing out bagels and coffee for the staff the very next day. And so when I went out to Broadus Wood on Wednesday, it was fancy dress day, and so the students were really showing up in all their different attire to be fancy that day. So when you look at the check-in today, you'll see Don Nicholson and a couple of students, and he's dressed, he's the teacher, and he's dressed very fancy to be with the students. So always a lot of good things going on out in the schools, but I just wanted to share those two items with the board.
Wonderful, thank you.
Chair Lee, I move to accept the following resolution. I know that I speak for all members of the School Board of Albemarle County when I say that we are concerned about our students' use of social media platforms such as Instagram, Facebook, TikTok, Snapchat, and others. We are concerned that these social media platforms are intentionally using deceptive practices to attract and addict our students and are gathering personal data about them that they often sell to third parties. Finally, we are concerned that habitual use of social media platforms day after day for many hours each day is having long-term detrimental effects on the mental health and well-being of our students. As a result, the School Division is incurring substantial costs to assist and support our students who are suffering from social media-inflicted injuries to their mental health. Based on these concerns, I move that the School Board of Albemarle County, Virginia, join in an effort by school divisions around the country to change and seek redress for these deceptive practices by social media platforms. I further move that the School Board instructs School Division Counsel Josiah Black to engage outside legal counsel to represent the division in this litigation and to act as the division's point person in the class action lawsuit.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Berlin, seconded by Ms. Spillman. Is there any discussion? I'm really glad to be joining this. It feels to me like the beginning of the tobacco lawsuits. It's that type of horrible effect that it has on people, so I'm really glad to be joining up.
Thank you.
All right. Could we have a roll call vote on that, please, Christine?
Mr. Graham Page?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Dr. Berlin?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Spillman?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Pace?
Yes.
Chair Lee?
Yes.
So moved.
Then Christine, did you have an announcement?
Oh, yes, ma'am. As you may recall, during the onset of the COVID pandemic, when we transitioned to virtual meetings, we adapted our public comment signup process to an online format. However, it's important to note that this adjustment was not officially reflected in our policy. I'm pleased to inform you that, starting from this evening's meeting, we are reverting to in-person sign-ups for public comments. And here's what the public needs to know. Moving forward, online sign-ups, the public still have the option to sign up for public comments online. The link will be available, starting at 9:00 a.m. on the Monday the week of the meeting, and it will close the Tuesday, the day of the meeting. Alternatively, individuals may also call my office to register to sign up for public comment interventions. For those who prefer to sign up in person, you can do so on the day of the meeting, starting at 6:00 p.m., and the signup sheets will be available until the start of public comment. We believe this change will better accommodate the diverse preferences of our community and encourage a broader participation in our public meetings. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Christine. All right. No other announcements from School Board or Superintendent? Next, we will have our public comment. Ms. Osborne?
All right. We invite and actively seek the public's input in matters relevant to School Board governance and provide time in our business meetings to hear from our residents and community members. During public comment, we expect respectful and on-topic comments. Disruptive behavior from speakers or from members of the public in attendance will not be tolerated. Anyone who willfully disrupts this meeting in a manner that prevents or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting may be ejected by the chair. Each presenter will be allowed three minutes to speak. However, the chair, with the consent of the board, may reduce the time allocated for all individuals to speak to two minutes, depending on the number of individuals who sign up. Public testimony guidelines are as follows. Speakers should adhere to the following protocol. State your name and address or your voting district. Address your comments to the School Board as a whole. Limit your comments to those matters that are relevant to School Board governance or School Division operations. Give written statements and other supporting material to the clerk. If you are unable to complete the presentation in the time allotted, a copy of supporting materials will be provided to School Board members. Three minutes will be allowed for each speaker who has signed up to speak. On the FY25 funding request public hearing this evening, that would be from last meeting. Okay. We're not doing that today. The chair, the two-minute thing, we went through that. The color-coded light system is used to time presentations. The yellow light means the speaker is two minutes, or one minute if there are more than 10 speakers, into the presentation, and the red light means the speaker is at three-minute limit of the presentation and must wrap up. In order to maintain respect for all points of view, the School Board requests no clapping, booing, or any other audible form of support or non-support be used. If members of the public wish to show their support for a speaker, they may stand or raise their hands. When multiple comments on the same topic have been presented, the chair may request additional comments on the topic be limited to those who have new information to present. Debate and dialogue with the School Board are not allowed. Use of the projection system is reserved for the staff-scheduled agenda presentation items only. All right, so tonight, it looks like we have six speakers. No one has signed up in the last, I have this, same thing, I think. Anybody? Yes. There's this, one, two, three, four, five, six, yes, we have six. Okay, so we will go in this order. It'd be Chelsea Sackno, Mr. J.B. Hurt, Elizabeth Collier. Let's do those three first, okay? So Chelsea Sackno. And correct me if I misspell your name, or mispronounce your name.
Good evening. My name is Chelsea Sackno. I reside in the Whitehall District, and I work at Albemarle High School as a literacy specialist. I have heard that there is some consideration to narrowly define the role of the high school reading specialist by adopting a model more consistent with that of traditional elementary intervention. This is neither sustainable nor research-based at the high school level. This year, I have partnered with 12 teachers individually across three departments and within PLCs to implement literacy instruction, support, and classroom-based interventions for 834 students. If I were asked to pull out students and work with them, I could only attend to a fraction of these. That would require me to identify which students do and do not receive literacy support services, and there is no equitable way for me to do that. Please note that our DIBELS data identified 70% of our ninth-grade students and 90% of our African-American students in the most at-risk bands for reading comprehension. Assuming that data is similar at each grade level, this represents 1,400 students in need of literacy support. We cannot attend to that with a traditional model of intervention. The strongest approach to serve the needs of all of our students is by partnering with teachers to embed literacy instruction and intervention in every single classroom. This is better supported by research, too. In Virginia, elementary teachers are required to receive instruction in teaching foundational literacy skills during their preparatory programs, but secondary educators receive no such instruction in theirs. Furthermore, a traditional model of intervention is inherently segregatory and rooted in a historically racist ideology around literacy and language. Several studies demonstrate that pull-out intervention marginalizes our adolescent learners who have not yet mastered academic English proficiency. These are the learners who have been the most unsuccessful under this model. Instead, research calls for a whole-school and community-wide model for secondary literacy intervention in which literacy professionals partner with educators to support curriculum design that embed supports, scaffolds, and classroom-based interventions to improve literacy and academic outcomes for all learners. This is better aligned with our strategic goals as a division and is called for by the bellwether report. Ultimately, we cannot remediate our way out of a Tier One instructional problem. We must establish culturally-responsive ways of teaching literacy that honor and affirm all of our students' linguistic backgrounds. We need to stop considering intervention from a deficit-based mindset, what the students lack, and start moving towards an asset-based framework. We must embed research-based instructional practices to support literacy development in and through content-area classrooms. This will enable us to serve all of our students more equitably and effectively through our partnerships with teachers, administrators, and community stakeholders with a goal of literacy and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like a letter with additional research?
Sure. All right, Mr. Hurt.
Hi, my name is J.B. Hurt, and I reside in the Samuel Miller District, and I'm here to speak on the Agnor Hurt school vote tonight. There are a lot of folks I've reached out to to be here as an advocate for my dad, Ben Hurt, but I didn't want this to become contentious. My dad would never have wanted that. Ben Hurt was principal of Albemarle High School for 30 years. More than 10,000 students graduated during his term there. He remembered and had an impact on every one of those students. He successfully guided AHS through the integration process peacefully, hired the first female high school athletic director in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and has been inducted into the Virginia High School League Hall of Fame. I plan to read you all a bunch of quotes from that book I sent out to you from the Albemarle Alumni Association, but then, you know, I'm hoping you've read those, but instead of putting you through those same quotes, again, I wanted to tell you about something I was struck by at the last meeting. I stayed and heard Dr. McLaughlin's presentation, and he read the mission statement for Albemarle County Public Schools, and it really struck me, the last line really jumped out at me, "We will know every student by name." It was that common theme, you know, that you'll hear me go back to here in just a moment, about knowing every student by name. It was quite providential that I heard that. My dad did know every student by name. Over the years, if you ask anyone, the thing that was first and foremost about him was he did know every student by name. He remembered them years later at class reunions, knew their families, knew what they were up to. It was just a phenomenal thing. There has never been anyone in education at Albemarle County who more exemplified "we will know every student" than Ben Hurt. I have a little concern about the process. I know we're not doing the, you know, surveys and all of that with it anymore, or that you all aren't. Matt Haas, when we met a little over three weeks ago, and he informed me of their recommendation when I met with him and Ms. Waters and Ms. Kaiser, he said, "I've never met anyone who knew your dad who didn't love him." I mean, that's a quote. I have a hard time reconciling that statement with this recommendation. There was some concern, it sounds like, about the environment at the school during those years. I'm curious how many students were spoken to, how many of those teachers. I still just keep coming back to, more than anything else, my dad's life and service as an educator truly embodied that very mission statement of Albemarle County Public Schools. He modeled that mission statement for every student. He knew them all. I hope that you'll vote against this recommendation and allow his name to remain on Agnor Hurt Elementary School. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Elizabeth Collier?
Good evening. I am not Elizabeth Collier, but I have a statement on her behalf, because she was not able to make it tonight, so I will go ahead and read that. Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Collier. I have been a math educator in Virginia for six years and was an educator in California for 13 years. I want to speak about how impactful it has been for me and my students to partner with a literacy specialist this year. I've always considered mathematics as its own unique language. However, in previous years, I have had students struggle with the math content on SOL exams because of the struggle to read and comprehend the math questions and problems. In the course of this school year, the literacy specialists at Albemarle High School have helped to educate and guide me in developing my students' abilities to read, comprehend, and break down the words and symbols in the questions they will face on the SOL. I had not considered how words like evaluate, identify, or factors are used in other content areas and may complicate my students' understanding of those words in my class. I am more attentive to both the language of the words and the language of the symbols used in problems. I previously taught in a middle school for four years, and the literacy coaches would pull out students to help them, but it did not often translate to improved comprehension on learning in the classroom. As well, some of the middle school students would be absent on the days that they were to meet with the literacy coaches in order to avoid being pulled from class to work with them. We have hundreds of students in our school that need literacy support, and these students have been benefiting from the guidance and education that our literacy coaches have provided to myself and other teachers so that we can reach more students. As an educator, my abilities to identify the language in my content and also support my students in decoding both directions and math problems have improved through my work with Chelsea, and my students are more engaged with both the content and the language. Our students' literacy and their SOL test-taking abilities are both improving. Our literacy coaches have been doing an amazing job, and we need our literacy specialists to continue to function as coaches for myself, other teachers, and for all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next three up will be Colin Thomas, Jackie Marinucci, and John Glass.
Hi, I'm Colin Thomas, Rivasna District. I'm here tonight to ask that you all consider adding to the redistricting decision you made a provision that allows all students with IEPs to stay at their schools. A couple weeks ago, I shared about my daughter, Kira, who has, it was autistic, has ADHD. I won't go into all of her great things, but she has significant challenges, as I shared, with things like work refusal, eloping, meltdowns, things like that. And caring for her requires a large amount of trust and intuition on her teacher's part. And we've realized that the IEP will transfer to other schools, that Stony Point has just as good a special education program as Stone Robinson, but what they don't have is the built-up two years of trust and intuition about Kira. We, my wife and I are in a position to advocate for her to go through the process to get a special dispensation for her, but we want to think about the other parents who may not have the same resources we have but whose kids need just as much care in the places where they've grown trust. And just an example of the trust that has been grown in my daughter, today she brought home a thing on a great woman at Stone Robinson. Ms. Stratus is a great woman at SRE. She is a good A-Base-T leader. She plays board games with me. She also helps me get calm. She's a great teacher at SRE. She wouldn't have written anything like this at the beginning of this year, at the, any time last year, and it's only because of the trust. And I like to say that trust is not very fungible. You can't just transfer it. It will take a lot of time, and I'm concerned for all the kids who are like her, who I don't think there are that many of, but would be greatly impacted if you were to take on that kind of division. Thank you.
Jackie Marinucci?
Seen you before, Jackie.
I'm not Jackie Marinucci, but I have a statement from her that she requested to be read to the School Board, so I will go ahead and do that. Good evening. This statement comes from Jackie Marinucci of Rivasna District to share firsthand experience with secondary literacy coaches. I teach Algebra I and AFTA at Albemarle High School and have worked with Chelsea Sackno, a literacy coach at Albemarle High School, throughout the school year. The option to play an instruction with a literacy coach has greatly improved the quality and breadth of my math instruction. I now know I cannot assume my students are prepared to identify, explain why, or predict. I take responsibility for my students' understanding and implementation of these essential academic skills. Additionally, my students have greatly benefited from push-in literacy support in the mathematics classroom. My students are receiving real-time support to unpack and understand both cross-curricular vocabulary as well as the mathematical vocabulary. The most obvious anecdotal evidence I have to support the continuance of push-in literacy support is that my students, even ninth graders in Algebra I, are now talking about mathematics in the classroom. The shift from doing the math to talking about the math has been such a strong indicator of student success. Thank you for bringing literacy coaches right into the secondary classroom so all my students can benefit from this crucial level of support. Thank you.
And Mr. Glass.
All right. My name is John Glass. I live in the Rio District, and I work at Albemarle High School as a Spanish teacher. So I have two things I would like to share with you all today, two crucial points that significantly, in fact, impact our educational environment. First, I want to give some gratitude to Chelsea Sackno as her exceptional work and support as our literacy specialist. Second, I also would like to highlight the necessity to rigorously enforce our--
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
Yeah.
You can move it if you need to.
So second, I would like to talk about rigorously enforcing our existing cellphone policies across all our schools. So first, to our instructional coach, over the past five years, I've been very fortunate to feel very resourced and supported in our department. We have lots of collaboration. We have very experienced teachers. However, it was consistently disheartening to feel that the academic fate of many of our students was determined day one that they walked in the classroom due to their enormous literacy gaps that are difficult to address in a Spanish classroom when they're learning a second language. So prior to Ms. Sackno's work with me, I used dynamic, engaging, fun interventions and activities, however, it was very teacher-centered, and overly reliant on the student's ability to form context through, form meaning through context clues, which hid lots of gaps in their literacy, and we were not able to address their deeper understanding. And I like how previously they mentioned that students are now talking about the language. Now, thanks to her interventions, I'm using tiered vocabulary lists. I'm using anticipation guides. I am using student turn-and-talk to make meaning inside the language. So I would echo that with math, in Spanish, the same. I hear students talking about language and learning about the language. It's hard to teach them Spanish when they don't know when to punctuate or capitalize or quote in their own language. So I have more shout-outs for Ms. Sackno, but all the love to you, Chelsea. So secondly, the pressing issue of cell phones. I would like to keep this short as time is against me. It is unreasonable to expect teachers to monitor and police cell phones in the classroom. The current policy is not enforced. It is not effective. It is known to our kids as a joke. It is extremely difficult to consistently enforce our cell phone policy. Our admin, our support staff are overworked. They're outworn. Many of our parents support and engage in the same problems, encouraging students to use their phones. I know time's about to run out, but let me say this. It is odd that businesses profit on student attention all day during school. It is odd that, if I may just finish that thought, it is odd that businesses that are profiting on student organizations and school organizations are allowed to have their business hours run constantly without restraint. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That concludes public comment.
Thanks very much to everyone who spoke tonight. Next, we have our School Division Work Session, starting with the School Name Review. Ms. Waters, Community Education.
Good evening. I'm Karen Waters, Director of Community Education and Project Manager for the School Name Reviews. At your last meeting, as the superintendent's designee, I shared that research into the namesakes of Agnor Hurt Elementary resulted in a--
Do you have your presentation?
Hmm? Oh, no, I don't have a presentation. I just have remarks. Thank you, Christine. Sorry, it's not flash. I wore the yellow, though, just to give you guys a little excitement. Oh, gosh. Okay. At your last meeting, as the superintendent's designee, I shared that research into the namesakes of Agner Hur Elementary resulted in a recommendation to retain the name Agner Elementary effective July 1, 2024, as Guy Agner Jr. has no association or oversight of public remarks or images on the record that are not reflective of ACPS values or policies. Since this recommendation is in alignment with Provision 3B1 of PolicyFA, if accepted by the Board as outlined in Provision 3B2 of the policy, there is no need to move on to Provision 3B3 and convene a renaming committee. As someone whose first name has literally become an adjective in recent years, I want to just wrap up my remarks by reminding the community that our process does not seek to assess a person's character, but rather whether the name and the record are reflective of our current values. And as a grandmother to two Greer Gecko's, I want to just take this opportunity to commend the Board on your fidelity to our division's values throughout this process, which include family, community, wellness, excellence, and equity, as well as your courage to ensure that all means all, and I stand ready to carry out whatever the results of your vote are. Thank you.
I'm open to a motion.
I move we accept the recommendation.
Moved by Ms. Osborn and seconded by Ms. Spillman. Is there any discussion? Okay. Ms. Waters, I wanted to thank you for all your work on this and also really underline what you said. We're not here to judge the character of any of the namesakes, but look to see if they match, if the record matches with what our forward-looking values are right now, who our students are today. So that is how, certainly I will be voting. So Christine, could we have a roll call vote on that, please?
Ms. Spillman?
Yes.
Ms. Osborn?
Yes.
Dr. Berlin?
Yes.
Mr. Graham Page?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff? Mr. Chuck Pace? Chair Lee?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you. Next, we have our FY '25 budget updates. Ms. Kumazawa from Budget and Planning.
I'm Maya Kumazawa, Director of Budget and Planning, and this evening, I just wanted to provide a moment to give you updates about our budget development process. This is a summary of the school board's funding request that was approved. On the left, we have our anticipated revenues at $259.6 million and our proposed expenditures at $272.9 million.
Excuse me. I apologize.
Yeah, we can't see. Oh, sorry.
I apologize.
Thank you. It's important. Thank you. Feel very silly now. These are the anticipated revenues and expenditures that you all have approved, which leaves a funding gap of about $3.3 million. We talked about how we might address the funding gap to prepare us to adopt a budget later in April, to plan for higher revenues, and a new one I added, which is technical updates, which I'll review this evening, as well as making reductions in our operations. And as a reminder, the budget that is adopted in April is a plan, and that can continue to be amended as needed. So the first piece is plan for higher revenues. Based on the information we have as of today, the general assembly budget adds about $4.8 million in additional revenue on top of what was presented in the funding request. In addition, yesterday, the Board of Supervisors proposed a budget that would add $2.9 million to our local transfer. They have approved the increase of two tax rates. One is the transient occupancy tax rate, as well as the personal property tax rate, and the $2.9 million is our direct share of this increase in local revenues. In addition, staff recommend a one-time transfer from a special revenue fund contingency of about $1 million, and then an additional use of fund balance of $1 million that's set aside for a reserve for the next fiscal year. The second piece is technical changes and updates to our expenditures. And this is a summary of those technical updates. They equal about $0.1 million in additional expenditures. The reserve is what I mentioned previously of using a one-time fund balance that we might accumulate at the end of this current year, set in a reserve for next year to provide a flexibility to the school board to use in the way they might want to, as well as provide flexibility with our revenue should they change. The second item is to implement the '23 to '24 redistricting study by updating staffing allocations according to the approved staffing standards. This would provide a savings of about $200,000. The third item is to update our staffing standards to set a minimum of a .5 FTE for music and a .5 FTE for art. This would benefit our smallest elementary schools. The next item is to update the compensation proposal to include a market-based increase that's just as part of a phased approach to ensure that our academic leadership compensation program remains competitive. The next one is to update the cost of the social-emotional supports proposal that would provide savings of about 1 FTE. And the next item is to reduce the budgeted payment for the P and M Regional Education Program in the budget for next year. And then finally, we have some updates with regards to switching vendors for our technology replacement program and other technical changes that would result in savings as well. The second part of the technical changes is to update our expenditures based on the general assembly's budget. So in their budget, they've approved a different staffing standard for EL staffing that would require us to enhance our staffing standard at a cost of about $360,000. The general assembly budget also includes more funding for our VPI Bright Stars program by putting back in place the .5 LCI cap that they would, so they would fund more for our program, which in turn would allow us to decrease our expenditure, which is a transfer into the Bright Star Special Revenue Fund. And then finally, the budget proposes a reduced group life insurance rate for our employees who receive that benefit for the next biennium. Right now, that rate is at 1.34% of salaries, and that would drop to 1.18% of annual salaries. So the final category is reducing our expenditures. I just wanted to point out that these were the, this was our planned approach to closing the funding gap, and we have been working with many iterations of this and being thoughtful about the approach of how we might reduce our expenditures, and this is the order and the priority by which we went. We've been working on this since December, and as you are aware, our assumptions have changed every month, so we've been updating our scenarios and looking at different iterations. So the proposed reduction expenditures tonight is the latest information with regards to how that would fit with our available revenues. So the first category is to defer our replacement cycles. If we defer the replacement of our K-2 iPads for one year, that would provide savings of about $700,000. In addition, we have a recurring transfer to the Vehicle Replacement Fund, which is a fund that replaces our non-bus fleet that the division operates. We could pause that transfer of $200,000 in the next fiscal year. The second category is pause hiring of vacant positions, and these categories include central office and department-based positions for about $500,000, reducing vacant foreign language and elementary schools' positions at a savings of $250,000, and eliminating the Assistant Principal Intern Program for a savings of $200,000. These savings total about $1.9 million. The final category is to increase student-to-teacher budgeted ratios by 0.5 for school-based positions that would result in overall FTE reductions of about 16.3. This, as a scenario we've been working on for quite some time, and with the news about the increase in state revenues, as well as the news about an increased local transfer as of yesterday, we have been able to reduce the, reduce the reduction by a significant amount by just adding 0.5 as part of the budgeted ratio. So if, in this proposal, the proposed student-to-teacher ratio in terms of how we budget would be 1 FTE per 20.05 K-3 student, 1 FTE per 22.25 4-5 student, and 1 FTE per 23.5 students in grades 6 through 12. The class size reduction ratios would remain unchanged at 1 FTE per 70 free-introduced lunch students. So if you were to combine those two bullet points, the first two bullet points, the projected average class sizes for next year would be 18.8 for elementary schools, 20.8 for middle schools, and 21.9 for high schools. But let me clarify, that's an average, so it's not a projection for every class. It would be the overall average. Planning for reductions are ongoing, and various applications for these reductions would be considered school by school. When we talked about this proposal to the Teacher, Teachers of the Year this week, they asked about, well, what does that look like in terms of historical class sizes? What is the budgeted class size compared to the actual class size? So this visual compares historically what the elementary class sizes were actually, which is the solid bluish line, and then the dotted lines on top of that are the budgeted ratios. So as you can see, the actual class sizes on average tend to be lower than the budgeted ratios because of that additional reduced class size ratio that we add. As you can see from the chart, there is a lot of variability between the minimum class size and the maximum class size, and this is mostly due to the numbers of students that are in each grade level. So depending on the total number of students in a grade level, sometimes you have very low class sizes, and sometimes you have high class sizes, depending on how much staffing that school gets. In addition, there's variability based on total enrollment. So as you can see, during the pandemic years, our class sizes were lower than what was budgeted, mostly because we saw lower enrollment than what we budgeted for. So the projection for '24 to '25 is if we meet our exact overall enrollment, then the average class size, and the numbers of students are spread out in a way that you can accommodate these average class sizes. That is the projection for next year. This is a similar chart for middle school class size, so the solid line in the blue is what we saw in actual class sizes on average, and then the dotted line is the budgeted class size. And the same chart for high schools. So in summary, this includes, at a high level, the summary of the detailed proposals. So planning for higher revenues, that's about a $9.7 million revenue increase. Technical updates and further expenditure reductions, further close our original $13.3 million funding gap as presented as part of the school board's request. All the dollar amounts are preliminary estimates for discussion purposes, and they may be subject to change. So I just have three questions for you. If you have any comments on them, is what else would you like to know? Do you have any clarifying questions? Is there any more information we should bring back to the next meeting, or is there anything you would like to see differently on April 11?
On the Board of Supervisors, are you saying that they agreed to an additional $3 million to get, can you go back to that?
Yep.
I hadn't heard that.
Yesterday, the Board of Supervisors approved the advertisement for their tax rates for the next fiscal year, and the advertisement is a maximum rate that they can adopt on May 1. And so that rate is also part of their proposed budget, which is their next iteration of the budget, and my understanding is that unless there's different direction given, that would continue on into May 1, but May 1 is when they technically approve any tax rates or the budget. So nothing is final until May 1.
But that would mean an additional $2.9 million to us?
Yes. Yes.
I just have a question about the one-time monies. Sorry, somebody's on my phone for some reason. Yeah, just in terms of what, what, aren't we restricted in how we spend that money? And what are your thoughts?
Are you talking about the special revenue fund contingency or the fund balance? Or both?
Oh, I don't know what you're talking about.
But the special revenue fund contingency is a special revenue fund that we have. We set aside some monies in reserve several years ago for situations that may arise like this year. So we're proposing, and that is one-time money because it's not a recurring source of revenue. And then the additional use of fund balance, that's from the school fund. We do not yet have a projection for how this year might end, but we can go ahead and plan for that use, and if we do have a savings, we can manage to it. We can, if we do have a savings that we want to use, carry forward essentially into the next year and use it for a purpose that may come up later. We can do that. So it's a contingency.
How much trouble would it be to, for the high schools and maybe even for the middle schools, to give us a breakdown of class size by discipline? Because looking at the average doesn't really tell the picture. Like, in some classes, it probably would be not much of a problem to have a larger class size, but in some classes, like sciences, for instance, the class size could vary quite a bit. So how much trouble would it be for you to give us, broken down by discipline, the average class size?
So we, each fall, we give a class size report to the Board, and Dr. McGlaughlin, I saw him nodding his head, he's going to send that out. So these are projections, and we don't know until it all shakes out, in terms of enrollment at the schools, what the actual class sizes will be, but in November, that's when we provide the report, once everything is settled. So he'll send that to you, and it gives you five years' worth of class sizes by subject area, by level, and it'll help you get an idea of what all the different class sizes are within that range, so you'll have a better picture of it.
Okay.
And Board members, I'm happy to send that now. It's also on the October 12 ESB site, where we have the class size report if you want it sooner.
Thank you, Pat.
Did the teachers, when you were talking to the Teachers of the Year, and they asked about the class sizes, specifically for elementary school, did they give any feedback on what that might look like or how they felt about that?
The one specific takeaway I had that they said was the average doesn't necessarily mean much for an individual teacher, because as you saw, there's a pretty big range in what they're actually seeing and what they're dealing with on an individual basis. As a budgeting exercise, there's not much more we can do beyond predicting an average based on our current staffing standards, because we staff based on projected total numbers of students. There may be other ways to do it, but that is how our current staffing standard is. I don't know if you want to add anything.
That's, that's the best way to say it, and the other piece is that when the principals have their staffing allocations, and I'm looking at several principals, so what they do is they come in and they are required to make a staffing plan where they can show how they're going to use the staffing, and then it, they actually have it broken down by classes, the numbers of students in each class, and our staff works with them, like Dr. Kaiser, Maya, Dr. Hayes will work with them to ensure that they can use their staffing to keep the class sizes at a minimum. that they can use their staffing to keep the class sizes at a minimum to the greatest extent. We do hold in reserve some staffing so that as the school year gets underway, or based on early enrollments for kindergarten, or then as students return in the fall, we can add some staffing for areas where they're going to have trouble with higher class sizes. But yeah, when we report in October or November, we break it all out because we know that the average doesn't communicate what's actually going on in the schools. So we do everything we can to ensure that the plan is good, they've got a good plan going into the year for class sizes that are going to be helpful and beneficial for kids and teachers, and then we catch it on the other side to see what they actually panned out to look like. And with regard to one-time money, we're making, our effort is to get the one-time money out of the expenditures, to your point, Dr. Acuff, which is well taken. An example of that would be having used the American Recovery Funds for the SEL coaches and spending down that money. That's a big cost in the budget to move them from one-time to recurring. It's a great investment, but that's what happens when you've been relying on the one-time money. So as we've gone through these exercises to get, to do our prioritization, Maya keeps reminding us that the cut, when we're looking at personnel, we've got to also think about the cuts, right? Because cuts will sustain the reduction in expenditure from one year to the next, whereas a reduction in one-time spending doesn't do that, and we need to avoid the one-time money going into personnel. So that's why you see things like pausing, replacement cycles, things like that. That's one-time, and it helps us avoid using one-time money.
I just want to thank you, Maya, because I know that this vote by the Board of Supervisors was last night, and you made this presentation at 8:30 this morning, and I'm very pleased that the additional $3 million, $2.9 million has permitted us to only increase class sizes by a half instead of a whole, one whole present, one whole child, student. So thank you for your work on this.
The preliminary plans that all the schools have done were based on one class size, one student increase, so now they'll be, as everything goes through, and you know, we have every reason to think that it will, then we'll be able to return the staffing back to the schools so they'll have a little more to work with. And I just echo Dr. Acuff's thanks. Thank you, Maya.
Budget season's almost over, Maya.
Maya, this might not be a bright question, I don't know, but we have a number of open classrooms in the divisions, so I'm assuming that when I look at these, the high numbers that we're talking about, per teacher really, not per classroom, depending on how we've organized those classes, like we might have a super classroom with two sections in there at the same time, is that right?
I believe it is per teacher.
It's per teacher. Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
This is not any difference in prioritization or anything like that, but because we have had so many proposals that we've been thinking through, if, when we do come back to approve it, if we could have just like, this is what's left, and then this is what we ended up cutting, because it's just hard to keep track, I think, for us and for me, I'll say, maybe not us, but, and for the public possibly, so we know everything that's still in and everything that was cut.
In terms of the proposals that have been presented to you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just for tonight, they are all, they remain as they are, with the exception of technical changes that we've made.
Okay. Anything else?
I would just like to acknowledge the Board of Supervisors working to increase our funding. I mean, clearly, they have some other issues that they want to address, but they have helped us close this gap, and I am very appreciative of it.
So on April 11th, we will continue working on the scenarios and improve it as best we can. We're hoping that you would, in concept, approve a scenario on April 11th so that we would be prepared to adopt a more detailed budget on April 25th. And as I mentioned, on May 1st, the Board of Supervisors will finalize their tax rates and adopt and appropriate our budget, which is part of the county's larger budget. On July 1st, the fiscal year begins, and as I mentioned, if we have other updates with the state or local or expenditures, we will have opportunities to amend the budget and the appropriation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Maya. Next, we have a 10-minute break. I'm seeing 7:26 on my computer, so we'll be back at 8:27.
Thank you for the opportunity to engage with you during this work session focused on chronic EAB, or the Education Advisory Board, supports over 2,500 organizations from K-12 to college to career. EAB works with leaders and practitioners to accelerate progress and drive results on the most important and challenging issues facing education. They partner with more than 450 of the world's best-known corporations through Ceramount, a corporation focusing on diversity, equity, and inclusion. Together, EAB and Ceramount provide a unique platform for collaboration among education and corporate leaders to address and ultimately close equity gaps. At EAB, their mission is to make education smarter and communities stronger. There are six core values that power the organization's work, including commitment to success, approach work with a spirit of generosity, believe in the power of insight, think big, act with speed and intention, and build on connectedness. ACPS has partnered with EAB on several research projects, and this past summer, the ACPS Strategic Planning Department contacted EAB and asked for research, strategies, and support along and asked for research, strategies, and support around the issue of chronic absenteeism. EAB partnered with ACPS, and during the beginning of the school year, consultants presented to the principals and executive leadership team during the opening leadership meeting. Throughout the year, a few schools have continued work closely with EAB and their chronic absenteeism cohort. We are so glad to have Ms. Shadé Young, EAB Director and K-12 Partner Research Engagement and Success, with us this evening to share with the board the broad global landscape and complexities that school divisions across the country are facing and working through with regards to the issue. Ms. Young will also share some research data and best-practice strategies that have been found to be successful with their partner schools in dealing with the issue of chronic absenteeism. We welcome Ms. Young. Please join us. We're so glad to have you with us this evening to address the Albemarle County School Board during this work session on chronic absenteeism.
Thank you for that lovely introduction. I feel like I don't have to even say much about EAB now. I'll just reintroduce myself. Like Dr. Kaiser said, my name is Shadé Young, and I serve as Director of K-12 Research and Subject Matter Expert. To lovely, to give a lovely summary to what EAB's core mission is when it comes to K-12, we pride ourselves on using research to tackle the sleepless nights caused by school-related issues. So whatever is a pressing issue for a school district nationwide, we vow to research it and find some best practices and solutions to help you all navigate it. Today, we're talking about chronic absenteeism. EAB uses the national definition of chronic absenteeism, which is missing 10% or more, can you hear me if I step over here? Or more of the academic year, and that's for any reason. And this becomes a common area of misconception. The easiest way to put it is chronic absenteeism is counted by every day a student is not in seat, whether that's excused, unexcused, sick, suspended, mental health, vacation, anything. So just so we're clear. Particularly, the research has grown since we first released it in 2018 because the pandemic exacerbated the issue of absenteeism to be beyond the point of chronic. Today, to guide our discussion, and I want to start by saying this was a large study. Even the original deck was over 60 slides, so I've reduced it to about 45 minutes. So if it feels like there's areas missing, I provided the whole deck with links to the full research so you can take a look and additional webinars. But this is a high-level overview. So to guide our discussion, I want to pinpoint what's changed in chronic absenteeism and what's driving the problem today. We'll discuss three essential conditions for addressing chronic absenteeism, and again, we'll support your district with next steps. We already have a number of district members and school leaders in our parent communications cohort for chronic absenteeism, and we have another one starting in April that I'm happy to say we'll have additional members in. So what is the cost of chronic absenteeism for both students and the district? Starting with the data highlighted on the left side of your screen, we see that chronic absenteeism significantly predicts future difficulties for students. They're less likely to read at grade level by third grade. They're four times more likely to drop out of high school than their peers. And this was the most surprising part of the research for me, that chronic absenteeism harms all students. I'll pause for that. If you look on the right. The percentage of chronically absent classmates predicts low reading and math achievement for all students, present or absent. Turning to the bottom of the slide, there are financial implications to chronic absenteeism. For instance, during the pandemic, districts in Texas saw a loss of nearly $2 million by just a 2% increase in absenteeism. This issue is even more critical in 28 states where school funding directly ties to attendance rate. We call that ADA. That ADA states are funded based on average daily attendance. That funding stream, if you follow me on the right, leads to funding for special education, meal replacement, textbooks, transportation, and even summer school programs. So in summary, there's an educational impact and a financial impact to absenteeism. The nationwide data paints a familiar but unsettling picture as well. As you can see, there are roughly twice as many students chronically absent compared to before the pandemic. And I know there's a bit of a dip there in 2020, but that's partially due to varying attendance policies during online learning. And there are a couple things to note here. There are some states missing from this analysis because they did not have their results in by the time of this release. But if you look at historical data, they would trend down and not up, but we just want to be clear. And secondly, while it's promising to see that marginal improvement in the 22 to 23 school year, chronic absenteeism rates are still almost twice as high as pre-pandemic, and we still have a long way to go. And as you see on the right, 92% of district leaders report being very or moderately concerned about chronic absenteeism, and they came to us to do something about it. A lot of the existing research before we did our study would have you believe that chronic absenteeism is a problem specifically pertaining to students of color, low income, special education students. And we want to note that while disparities exist, we're seeing significant increases in chronic absenteeism among all income quartiles, ages. Among all locales, every single demographic has had an increase in chronic absenteeism. As a result, districts are grappling with the challenge of responding to the increase in numbers of students absent from day to day. Despite claims of employing a multi-tiered system of strategies, it becomes evident that the existing policies are not effective. Upon closer examination, Tier 2 and Tier 3 interventions are essentially one-to-one approaches targeting individuals and lacking a genuinely tiered or scalable system. This deficiency leads to a metaphorical eruption, as you see on the screen. As the absence of scalable strategy exacerbates, on the right side of the slide, you see it's impossible to resolve this by simply increasing staffing levels. A significant 45% of districts report being understaffed this year alone. And although some have used ester funds to address the problems temporarily, you all have talked about this, these funds are set to expire within a few months. Add into the complexity that while the number of students decrease, the funding to address the issue also decreases. If the support plans districts currently use aren't working, we need to understand why. And through research, we identified three main root causes. One, parents are less likely to send their children to school since the pandemic. Two, students' reasons for absences go unaddressed. And teachers are underutilized in the fight against absenteeism. The research not only highlighted challenges, but it also unveiled three vital conditions essential for reducing absenteeism. And that's one, parents need to know why and when to bring their students to school. Students can and want to show up for school. And teachers need to know how to embrace their role in impacting attendance. So now let's spend a little time talking about the importance of engaging parents directly when it comes to attendance. The fact is, we've seen a combination of new and old factors create the perfect storm for increasing the likelihood that parents will just say, "It's okay, you can stay home from school." If you look at the column on the left, these are our traditional reasons, right? Illness, housing, mobility, threats to safety, mental health. But if you look towards the middle, these are three new reasons that we uncovered in, under the research of why parents are more likely to say, "It's all right, you can stay home from school." And number one, district messaging has wavered on when to keep your kid home over the last few years when they're not feeling well. Two, parents increasingly doubt the value of in-person learning, largely to the pandemic and online learning, them working from home. And finally, parents have a historic pattern of being poor monitors and estimators of their children's absences. We've seen research where parents underestimate their absence, students' absence by at least 2%. This is now a situation in which parents are not understanding the benefit of in-seat attendance and actively fighting against it. While we all know that parents are a big part of the equation, particularly for young students, we know that they're, they're, they're hope, they are not the whole piece. When we get to the middle school and high school level, we know the decision around whether, whether to come to school or not is often left up to the students. If you look on the left, these are what we uncover as districts' most common strategies. We have the carrot and the stick, where you have your attendance recognition awards, your donuts for 100% attendance. And these are good for students who are already self-motivated. Then you have your punitive measures such as detention or suspension, which only exacerbates the issue if the student doesn't want to be there anyway. Making it incapable for them to come is not helpful. We also see districts addressing basic needs for students, providing free breakfast, laundry services, even late bus pickup. And that's helpful, and we're not saying that you should stop that, but we're saying it doesn't have the same impact and rewards as before. So if you follow me to the right, these are the new reasons why kids are skipping school. Two-thirds of kids aren't comfortable telling an adult if they're being bullied. One out of two students are unsure about their academic level. They actually question the, we had direct quotes that students said, they question even if, that what they're learning in school connects to their future. They question if they can even be successful at school if they do attend. Then we see one out of two kids saying they don't belong at school. And you see kids not, I'm sorry, that was background. You see kids not connecting the classes to the future. So it's a problem. It's not just the parents are feeding into it, but the students aren't even having the conversations with the parents to create that buy-in. We're also seeing it with teachers. Parents feel disconnected from their teachers. They want to hear from teachers about their student's success. Right now, we find that districts have front desk personnel, admin, calling and sending letters about their student attendance, and they're frankly disengaged with that. They feel that those people, even leaders, do not understand their child, and they're not invested in the outcome of their student returning. And so today, we're going to focus on addressing those three groups, thinking about building the conditions in schools where parents understand why and when to bring their kids to school, where students can and want to be in school, and where teachers understand and embrace the role that they play in the equation. Before we dive into each category, I invite you to pause for a minute and think to yourself, what do these three conditions look like in our district today? Which one have the most for improvement? And are we excelling in any area currently? So here's our roadmap. Like I said, this study is a large study with nine practices. For the sake of time, I'll go through and highlight one to two practice for each subgroup, parents, students, and teachers. Let's talk about parents again. Like I said, the parent misconception has grown. As you see, we have 63% of K-6 grade teachers saying parent misconception is the main cause of absenteeism, and 26% of 7th through 12th graders. Though there's a grade level split, almost all agree that parents' values around attendance have changed. So let's look at the parent beliefs that I shared in the previous slide. We see that parents are uncertain to send kids to school, and we see that district messaging has not caught up. We see that parents increasingly doubt the value, and districts having corrected the pandemic-era messaging promoting virtual learning as the same as in-person learning, there has been no messaging on record to talk about, to re-engage students and talk about how post-pandemic in-person learning is even more crucial. And then, like I said, parents underestimate the frequency of their child's absence, but parents also only hear messaging when their child is truant. They feel that there's a gap between one, two, and three-day messaging, and it only comes as a punitive letter once it's too late. Before we talk about the solution, let's look at the typical status quo timeline. So if you follow along, and this is, let me back, this is for most districts. Your district may be different, but about at the fifth absent, depending on the time of the year, parents receive a mandated state warning letter. The parent feels blamed, it causes fear, denial. And then we see this gap where there's actually no change in behavior. Then the student enters Tier 3. They have their state-mandated one-on-one case management meeting, and there's still either no change in behavior till we have reports of districts reporting that parents are pulling their student out and homeschooling them. The upper grades, students are dropping out. This two-messaging system is not working. What we at EAB propose is a reimagining of that timeline. Where first, we begin with supportive outreach before the mandated truancy letter. So this looks like absence-triggered automated messaging, such as texts directly to parents, offering parent support to get kids back in school. Next, if absence continue to accumulate and daily attendance fall below 90%, we're starting early, so if it falls below 90%, this is where we move to targeted, teacher-led outreach. For example, a teacher can send an empathetic email saying, "We miss your child. They missed this work. Can't wait to see them back." If absences persist, we recommend sending a second form of communication, such as a phone call or a home visit, just another intense engagement to re-engage that child. This may happen before or after that state-mandated letter. On this timeline, we're looking at it throughout the whole year, but depending on your district and regulations, it may happen before or after that letter. The good news is that if it happens after the letter, they would have had the text message already, and it wouldn't come as a shock. If things continue to get worse, we enter the Tier 3 category. This is when the student falls below 80%. And again, this is for unexcused and excused absences. We don't want to wait until we're in truancy territory. At this point is where we recommend the one-to-one intervention, such as a home visit, mentor, an attendance mentor, a parent resource survey, anything that can help alleviate those barriers and get the student back in school on a one-to-one level. So again, all of this is aligned in best practices. This timeline focuses on frequent supportive outreach, not punitive. And the more you focus on that movable middle, that Tier 2 level, that's why you see multiple engagements at that point, then that frees up resources to move to the Tier 3 level for our students that need higher needs and higher intervention. So here's an example of what the text messaging looks like. We pair the message with supportive resources. So as you see, like, hey, Avery was out. And then we have, and this can look different at any school, but it's a simple reply where they can request resources, request time with their teacher, or request mental help. This eliminates the feeling of shame that parents may have making that first phone call to ask for help. It automates the response, so each number goes to the actual party that can help address that need, and it's automated. So you all were set, the timing that it goes out, we recommend two to three days of absence, excused or unexcused, and they receive that as the first messaging. and they receive that as the first messaging, and this will come well before a truancy letter. The field of psychology teaches us that there are four key actions to motivate and behavioral change. One is showing understanding without placing blame, empowering others to ask for help, removing room for interpretation, and clarifying the cost of the current mindset. To motivate parents to change their behavior about allowing their kids to miss school, EAB researchers have incorporated behavior change concepts into our communication strategies. This strategy, such as a text messaging, um, focuses on what to message, utilizing evidence to counter misbeliefs. We also explore when to message, which is up to the school, but early, taking into account parent preference for messaging, whether that's text, or a phone call, or email. And lastly, we talk about how to message, by integrating the science of behavior change, message tone, and utilizing the most effective messenger for communications, which we believe are teachers. Another tactic that we have to offer is an attendance nudge policy. And this is a principle, as you see outlined in the turquoise, that you can post around schools, you can send the first day a class. And this is an immediate quick checklist that parents can look at in the morning and go through to decide if they should send their kid to school. So, "See you in class. Yes, you have a runny nose, but you don't have a temperature over 104." No throwing up, no diarrhea, um, eyes crusty. May want to stay home, like, you can go through quickly, because we found that parents do not know where to find attendance, uh, measures for the district or their individual school, especially in a timely manner. They are usually not phone-accessible, or they have been sent in a net, in a newsletter at the beginning of the school, and they're far removed from it. To have never heard of those, um, new changes again. So this is a principle. We've seen people put it on magnets for refrigerators, um, and it's definitely posted around the school. We also recommend graphics. We have to keep in mind the different learning levels of our parents, the different languages of our parents. So anytime you can use graphics, stoplights, colors, anything that can immediately signal what the parent is to do is always helpful. We also, as you see at the bottom of the printout, you always have to make a push of why this is important for the parent. It's not just about not missing school, it's about what in-seat attendance affords your child, and that's time management skills, problem-solving skills, collaboration. We all, when we send any type of attendance material, we want to highlight the positive as well as be honest about what the consequences may be. We also want to provide resources at every turn, whether that's the phone number to call for help, or if it's the text message that links to the service. So this is another template that we offer. You can change it in your school colors, you can add your own messaging, but we want to take out, and I'll show you the screen, we want to take out the guesswork out of all of our interventions. It's not enough to just say what you need to do, but we actually walk districts through it. And as we mentioned earlier, we have a parent communication collaborative in play right now. We just completed session three. Um, this is just an outline of the deeper dive we're doing on parent messaging. So that was a high-level overview, but we're actually working on individual plans for districts. We have a number of people, like I said, in the session, and they go through these workshops with the step-by-step process to tailor, um, interventions for parents for your district. So let's talk about students quickly. Our question here was what conditions were needed for, to make kids feel personally motivated to come to school? So EAB has extensive research library on positive school behavior, but when we, that was completed in 2018. When the pandemic added the element of student disinterest to absenteeism, we went back and reevaluated how those motivations would lead to this study. And this is what we came up with. To motivate students to attend school, they need to feel confident that success is possible. They need to have a connection to peers and adults. They need to be engaged in school community activities. They need to know that their school is there for them, and that help is available when needed. As you see at the bottom, after three years of limited progress, districts are worst in multiple areas. 71% of 13 and 19-year-olds now say that schoolwork makes them feel anxious and depressed. Four in 10 students feel less connected to peers or adults in their school. And only 39% of students have taken classes or participated in programs to explore careers. Our research, though extensive, we, um, for the sake of this, I wanted to focus on the two that was most accessible. And we saw over 100 school districts say that they wanted to build relationship connections for schools. So, um, we have a practice that combines a positive relationship mapping and student interest conversation. So I'm going to show you why that's important and then show you the tool. So I don't have to tell you that relationships are important. We know that. It's the cornerstone of improving student achievement. We know that when students have strong relationships with adults in the building, they are more likely to be interested in their classes, they are less likely to be bullies, and they're less likely to feel sad or depressed. So for the purpose of this conversation, we also know that students with a strong connection to adults are more likely to attend school. So one particular school in Warshaw County, they developed an extension of what we call a relationship mapping. They called this the Relationship Mapping Exercise Tool, and it was actually a spreadsheet. And if you follow me, they put every student in the school, name on the left. And then they had teachers go through for each student, and they had to put a checkmark if they recognized the student's name or face. They had to put a checkmark if they knew the student's academic standing, if they had regular, regular positive feedback for the student, if they had non-academic facts they knew about the student, and if they knew the student's story. If they knew the student, they would put their initials in that trusted adult category. They did this six weeks. I'll go through the process. They did this, the first six weeks of school, they gave time for teachers to naturally meet the students, speak to them in the halls. By the six weeks when they filled out the spreadsheet, they found that, and I'll go back, students that were trending about tier-two all the way to tier-three chronically absent had the least amount of connections with teachers. If you see the second row and the third row and the last row. They also made correlations to the grades of these students. And they found that the students with the least connection also had lower grades. I'll go back to what they did next. So after they reviewed the gaps, they made a plan to fill in the gaps with additional staff. They came up with a practice called a two-by-two. So they would have to make two connections, if you follow me at the bottom. They would have to make two connections with two students twice a day. They cannot talk about, uh, they cannot be in the class, and they cannot talk about academic stuff. They did that for a semester, and they saw an 18% growth in the graduation rate as they studied it from 2012 to 2017. So this is a practice that we offer, the actual mapping tool, and the instructions can be adapted. We've seen, um, schools adapted by adding student pictures to it. We've seen them adapted to cover, like I said, not just attendance, but behavior and grades and any area where they believe that adult intervention could help improve the student. So I just wanted to share this quickly. This is another resource we can provide. And lastly, teachers. Our final section is short, but nonetheless very crucial. Like I said, parents want to hear from teachers about their student progress. And I know you may think when I say, "Teachers add another thing to their plate." They wear so many hats. How will they have the time? How will they know what to do? And we have two practices to share with you. One is a basic checklist or a log. And this is where you define one to two actions that a teacher must do every day, every week, and then you can go every quarter. And these are clear, whether it's log attendance, um, have a personal welcome for students who are out, and then weekly, they're calling parents. We've seen, uh, teachers send postcards, but some type of second touch, um, for absent students. And then every quarter, what does that escalate to? In the positive and the affirmative, whether that's a party or whatever the, the student activities, um, the student type of activities that they would like to see, or if that's an escalation of joining a home visit to further engage. But this was helpful for teachers because it was short, it was simple, they were able to post it in their class. It didn't take a lot of prep or think time. As they took the role, they could go through at the end of the day and say, check off each one. We know that elementary looks different than middle school and high school, so this is also a checklist that can be given to counselors or, um, homeroom teachers. But whoever has the most engagement with that student, we want to make the process easy and simple. We did that. We have resources. We saw success with that. But they came back and they said, okay, the checklist is helpful, but when teachers reach out to parents, they don't know what to say. So we came up with a script. Um, this script is not just a read, a long script, but it offers a scenario and then a potential answer. So if a parent says this, this is how you can answer. We found success with this because, again, teachers don't have time to think of every scenario. They want to focus on a positive relationship with the parent, so they felt uncomfortable having hard conversations about attendance and re-engagement without knowing the proper words to say in a supportive manner. So that's where the checklist, I mean, the script came in. So you see that on the left. How did this work? We found success when districts gave this during faculty meetings or PLCs at the beginning of the year, before teachers needed it, so teachers didn't feel singled out. They started the year informed. And this paired with the checklist, they knew when to make these calls, conversations, or emails, and they had the guide to guide them through. And this is, again, another edible resource that we can provide. All of this is to lay the framework, but we want districts to color it with their own information and what they know their teachers need to support them. So as we close today, I want you to leave knowing that you can ensure that parents know why and when to bring their kids to school. You can take the guesswork out of student connections and have them wanting to come to school, and you can empower teachers in the fight against absenteeism. So thank you for your time and attention.
All right. Our agenda for this portion of the work session includes a review of our... There we go. Um, our agenda for this portion of the work session includes a review of our ACPS vision mission. Um, definition and discussion of chronic absenteeism. Um, Dr. Rusty Karlock, Equity Education Data Scientist, will present data on the current state of chronic absenteeism in ACPS. Um, Dr. Jesse Turner, Director of Student and Family Support, will discuss the division, uh, plan for supporting schools. School leaders will share specific strategies that they have implemented and found success, um, this year. And lastly, at the conclusion of the presentation, um, the team will field any questions from the board. Um, all of our work and everything we do in ACPS is centered around our strategic plan, "Learning for All." Our vision, uh, learners are engaged in authentic, challenging, and relevant learning experiences, uh, becoming lifelong contributors and leaders in our dynamic and diverse society. Our mission, working together as a team, we will end the predictive value of race, gender, and special capacities for our children's success through high-quality teaching and learning for all. We seek to build relationships with families and communities to ensure that every student succeeds, and we will know every student. Our values include equity, excellence, family, and community, and wellness. And our goals, um, thriving students, affirming and empowering communities, and equitable and transformative resources. And although our session tonight touches on all goals, the primary focus will be around goal one and goal two, um, thriving students and affirming and empowering communities. Our Everyday Matters, Every Moment Counts Attendance Campaign this year focuses on enhancing and making our school communities dynamic, positive, highly active environments so that all students feel positive connections to their schools, where there are strong relationships between students, teachers, staff, families, and community. We want students to be eager and excited about coming to school, engaging in everyday learning. Whether an avid field trip, school-wide morning meeting, listening session, after-school club activities, STEAM activities, et cetera, um, providing diverse activities that connect students to their interests and passions will support our efforts to reduce chronic absenteeism. Um, in recent years, school divisions across the nation have been working to reduce chronic absenteeism. The pandemic has exacerbated the issue, um, as Ms. Young has stated and presented in her presentation. Um, and now school divisions are seeing chronic absentee rates that are double what they have experienced prior to the pandemic. In our school division, the highest rates of chronic absenteeism had been around 10%. However, since the pandemic, we have been seeing rates of 20 to 25%. Uh, prior rates that were once the highest are now the lowest. Chronic absenteeism is missing more than 10% of school during an academic year, including excused and unexcused absences and suspensions. Considering the academic year, this equates to about 18 days per year, roughly two to three days per month. Um, chronic absenteeism is compounded as students miss school during the elementary years. Um, students miss that foundational knowledge, which results in anxiety around catching up and the lack of content knowledge. Students continue to miss school, and this cycle is just continuous. So there are a number of, um, barriers to regular school attendance, and this chart gives you a wide range, um, from trauma, uh, poor transportation, housing, and food insecurity, um, to anxiety, negative, parents having negative experiences in school, to, um, uh, lack of challenging culturally responsive instruction, um, lack of academic and behavioral supports. Um, and then their misconceptions about, um, absences are only the problem if they're unexcused, and missing two days per month doesn't really affect learning. Um, so these are just a, a wide array of barriers. So these are just a wide array of barriers. The prevalence of chronic absence signals underlying systemic challenges that impede academic and personal well-being, reflecting the struggles and stresses faced by students and families in their daily lives. Schools must therefore play a pivotal role in addressing these barriers, providing the necessary programmatic and policy interventions to support families in overcoming these challenges. By doing so, schools can mitigate the adverse effects on student achievement, engagement and mental well-being, ensuring a supportive and conducive learning environment for all students. Schools, families and communities can improve attendance when they work together. Families and communities need hope for a better future, the confidence in schools that they can help their students to succeed and the resources, skills and knowledge needed to actively support students to engage in school. And then schools need everybody to have all hands on deck. They need trauma-informed and restorative strategies to meet the needs of students and families. And they need the district to provide effective policies and systems that support school staff in taking and promoting positive problem-solving practices. So there are a number of reasons why it's important for us to focus on school attendance. And some of this, you heard in the previous presentation. Students living in poverty are two to three times more likely to be chronically absent. The most marginalized groups, Pacific Islander, Native American, African American, Hispanic, students with disabilities and high school students are impacted disproportionately. Increased student anxiety leads to decisions to skip school. Students, just an example, students in lower grades who are chronically absent, they result in the lack of foundational knowledge. As these concepts get harder throughout the grades, the lack of understanding compounds and anxiety sets in, leading to students in the cycle of skipping school. And then, you know, chronic absenteeism can be addressed by stating expectations to families, developing and implementing plans and monitoring to address student barriers to attendance and increasing positive student engagement and providing training for school administrators and staff. So at this time, I would like to turn it over to Dr. Karlock, the Equity Education Data Scientist, who will discuss the state of chronic absenteeism in ACPS.
Thank you, Dr. Kaiser. Thank you, Ms. Young. Thanks to everyone. It's a pleasure to be here with everyone tonight to talk about this important issue. This first chart shows Alvermore County Public Schools' chronic absentee rate back to 2012 and how that rate compares to the state. You can see the large increase in chronic absenteeism that occurred during the pandemic. The spike in the data represents a 96% increase in those years of 2020 to 2023. Comparing to the red line, that's the state average during that time period, we can see that prior to the pandemic, many of those years, we were well below the state average. However, that began to change around 2016 and continued during and after the pandemic so that we were then above the state rate. In our most recent data through the middle of March, we've seen a 25% decline in our chronic absentee rate from the previous year. This improvement is meaningful as it represents around 800 fewer chronically absent students this year compared to last year. And again, that's pulling data from March 14th. This is looking at the flip side. So what does our positive attendance rate look like and how does that compare to our chronic absentee rate? So these charts are comparing Q1 and Q2 from this school year to last school year. And we can see again that there's an increase in attendance in our school district this year relative to last year. And again, that difference is meaningful. So just in those first two quarters, those changes, which seem somewhat small here, represent 14,300 additional days of attendance for students throughout the division. So in the next few slides, we're going to look at variation in chronic absenteeism within our school division. And we'll start by looking at variation across our school levels. These charts show that high school students are slightly more likely to be chronically absent than middle and elementary school students. When we get a little more granular with the data and we start looking across grade levels, what we see is that on the early side of elementary school, so kindergarten, first grade, chronic absenteeism is higher. And on the later side of high school, so 11th and 12th graders, it's also higher. It's in the middle of students' schooling trajectory through our K-12 system where we have the lowest levels of chronic absenteeism for our students. This slide shows variation in chronic absenteeism across all of our schools in Alvermore County. And as we begin to look at variation across schools and groups, I want to reiterate the importance of looking at these data from a systems, asset-based perspective. This is to help us identify how and where we can do a better job of supporting schools, students and families. It's to help us to see how we can facilitate collaboration among schools, families and the community to remove the barriers that can lead to chronic absenteeism. We can see that there is a significant variation across schools in terms of their chronic absentee rates. Systemic factors such as economic hardship, transportation, access to health care and others lead to some of our schools supporting three times as many students facing chronic absenteeism as other schools. As you can imagine, this means the resources needed to confront these issues also varies across our schools. This chart shows chronic absentee rates by membership groups of race and ethnicity. And we can see that all membership groups experienced stark increases during the pandemic and that all groups have seen an improvement since then. We can also see disparities in chronic absenteeism, with Latino and Black students more likely to face the challenges that lead to chronic absenteeism at rates two to two and a half times that of others. Similarly, if we look at our English learners compared to our non-English learners, we see that there's been a rising rate of absenteeism since 2017. But this is also true for all of our students. It has been increasingly true for our English learners, though for them as well, we have also seen an improvement this school year thus far. This chart shows the same variation in chronic absent rates between students with special needs and their peers. The disparities between students with IEPs and those without them has persisted all the way back through 2012 and showed similar patterns of increase during the pandemic and improvement since. While all of these variables, school, race, ethnicity, English learner status and special needs are important in identifying where we can better support students facing challenges that lead to chronic absenteeism, the variable that was most important in identifying the challenges of chronic absenteeism at the school level was economic hardship. This plot shows our elementary schools combined into geographic region, their percentage of students receiving free and reduced lunch on the horizontal axis and the chronic absentee rate for students within that region on the vertical axis. We can see that as the rate of economic hardship experienced by a school community increases, so too does its chronic absentee rate with a very strong correlation. This shows the importance of building relationships with families, as our previous presenters have discussed, partnering with our communities to confront economic hardship while also mitigating its impact on students' school attendance. If we use these same variables of free and reduced lunch enrollment and chronic absenteeism, but instead plot our individual schools, we see the same relationship. As the rates of poverty and economic hardship increase in the community, so does chronic absenteeism. However, we can also see there is more variation. There are some schools below this trend line that have lower rates of chronic absenteeism when accounting for the economic hardship that students face. This provides us opportunity to identify schools that are leaders in addressing some of these issues and also to find where some of our divisions work to improve these trends is taking root. I'm excited now to pass it over to Dr. Kaiser and Dr. Turner, as well as our principals, who will discuss the division-level supports and school-level supports to address these issues. Thank you.
The ACPS District Attendance Team establishes a system of aligned district-level policies, practices and supports to facilitate and sustain improved attendance, engagement and academic achievement. And we strive to do this by a number of things. Capacity building, building the capacity of our school leaders, staff and school teams to implement a multi-tiered approach to support a culture of high attendance. We use actionable research to provide accurate and timely, actionable attendance and absenteeism data to our district leaders and our school leaders. We have a notice from Dr. McLaughlin every week to check our Power BI information. So the schools have access to data to monitor their attendance. Positive engagement equips schools with the evidence-based strategies to positively engage students and families. And the schools have implemented the EAB strategies this year and have found them helpful. Strategic partnerships. We've mobilized our community partners to help us address the barriers to attendance. And we had a business partner breakfast today to talk about our school champions. And so we want our partners to be engaged and involved in our work as well. Adequate, equitable, transformative resources to ensure that resources are sufficient and equitably allotted to schools with the greatest needs. And shared accountability, establish systems to hold both the district and the school-level staff accountable for doing their part to reduce chronic absenteeism. And so each of the district, as well as the schools, have attendance teams. We also provide compliance support. There are checklists and templates that are in Power School that the schools have access to. There's compliance training and Power School training for office associates. And then the Director of Student and Family Support, Dr. Turner, he works with the school-level teams. Each school-level team has set goals and developed their attendance plan and put them in action. They've convened their attendance team, they've progress monitored, they've initiated their tiered response and reported and documented their progress in their strategic school improvement plan and consistently updated information in Power School. We've adopted and implemented the EAB best practices. We state attendance expectations and guidelines for families, build school incentives so that students will want to come to school, ensure that teachers and staff know their responsibilities regarding attendance. And we've used the scripts and a lot of the supplemental resources that EAB provides to help engage with our families. We've initiated our division-level attendance communication, the nudges, and we've had videos that have gone out to our families. We also provide our Bright Era, Bright Chat text message support to send family frequent messaging regarding attendance. And we've implemented the division-level incentives and recognition for improved attendance and have these recognitions each quarter for our schools at each level. And then we've also provided division-level resources and support. The division-level attendance team meets monthly to hear the challenges across the division, to problem-solve, provide supports to schools. We also work across departments to get the resources and supports out to the schools and address the challenges. And then we've developed and we've given incentives to the schools and we've gotten their feedback around the incentives for both teachers and students for their attendance. And now, at this time, I would like to turn it over to Dr. Jesse Turner, Director of Student and Family Support, who will discuss the school-level attendance teams and communication and family engagement.
Thank you, Dr. Kaiser. Good evening. I'd like to talk a little bit about what we are doing at the school level. And you've heard about the crisis that's going on with chronic absenteeism, truancy. One of the things that we wanted to do this year was, we really wanted to take another look at how we could really beef up what we're doing at the school level to help with attendance. At the end of the day, the biggest way for us to get children to come to school is for people in the schools to know the children. It's those relationships that make children want to come to school and the things that go on at school. So, but in order to do that, you gotta have a system of knowing and being in tune with student attendance. So we wanted to really work on our school-based attendance teams. Started in July with conversations that I had with principals, either in leadership meetings or during an individual conversation. So we wanted to make sure that each school had an attendance team that would be made up of a school administrator, a counselor, an OA, because oftentimes, an OA is the person who is working with sending out the letters or some form of communication. School nurse, when possible. Sometimes children are missing school because of an illness and the only one who might really know about that situation could be the nurse. So the nurse can help provide information to the team. In our schools that have the SEL coaches, some coaches are part of those teams. Also, I would say that safety coaches in some schools also will participate. And teachers, depending on the time of day that the meeting takes place. But the goal around making sure that our attendance teams were filled with people who had a pulse and would know what was going on with the students so the conversations could be rich and robust and based on how to improve student attendance. Okay? Dr. Kaiser said a little bit about what they do, but the teams do monitor student attendance. Student attendance sort of comes in two phases, okay? When you're monitoring a child's attendance, one, you're looking at chronic absenteeism and two, truancy. Okay? And they're two different things. And sometimes that can be somewhat confusing, but there is a difference, okay? And one of the things that we have tried to really focus on is chronic absenteeism. Because here in the state of Virginia, truancy is really guided by a state code. It's very, very descriptive in what you're supposed to do. But we don't want to focus on just truancy. And if we find that children have multiple unexcused absences, which starts that kind of race towards being truant, we're trying to work on just getting them in school, not on... on getting them in court. Okay? But I wanted to say that because there is a difference between kind of monitoring chronic absenteeism and monitoring truancy, all right? But the teams at the schools, that's what they do. I have the connection with the intake office if we have to go that route. I'm the one that deals with the intake office and works with the school if that has to happen. But other than that, I'm working with the schools on chronic absenteeism and the different strategies that they are employing to try to get children to come to school. So the schools have engaged in calls home. The teachers are calling, counselors are calling, admins calling. It doesn't matter if someone has a connection with the child, we're trying to have them call. The principals are doing it. So we do send letters home. We obviously know that that's not, that can be somewhat impersonal. We don't, that's not the first thing we want to do, but we do. If we run into a situation where a child has five unexcused absences, then we move right into calling in the parent and the child and having them help us craft an attendance plan so we can get it on paper. We can have children agree and parents agree and try to help them work through that. Schools have conferences with parents, whether it's at the school, at the parent's home. Our principals have been open to doing whatever they possibly can to meet parents where they are in terms of helping their students or children. And obviously, sometimes we do interact with the courts, but it's more so the intake office, not actually court unless there's a student who has some other history with the court. But to date, I don't think we've had a student in that situation. So, but when the teams meet, the main goal is really to brainstorm ways to make school a place that children want to be and a place where parents feel comfortable sending their That's the real focus of the teams, not to be punitive. We want children to want to be in school, and we want parents to feel comfortable in sending their children to us every day. Why are we seeing some of these issues with student attendance? Some of our families are facing some major challenges, transportation, work schedules, student illness. Ms. Doll, she has left now, but we have been working probably for a week to meet with the parent. The parent works from like seven at night to seven in the morning. We actually had a meeting scheduled for today. The parent texts me at 6:45 and said, "My boss is gonna be late. I'm not gonna get out of here till nine o'clock." She'd already been there since seven the night before, you know? So, I mean, we have situations like that, that our families are having a tough time. And it trickles down to the children as well as, obviously, the school. Student illness is another. We've also seen a rise in homelessness. And in some situations, a one-bedroom apartment is costing parents $1,800 a month, $1,500 a month. People are moving constantly because they can't pay the rent or they're being evicted. Our attendance teams are running across all of that on a daily basis, and it almost doesn't matter which school. So there are a lot of challenges that families are having now. See, teams report that strong relationships have formed with parents as a result of communication around attendance. Yes. For many of our schools, attendance has been, or attendance issues and having those conversations have been the jump-off point for schools to connect with families. And I've had principals, assistant principals, report to me that they have actually been able to improve their relationships with families, especially families that maybe they were kind of disconnected with prior, that they, because they have constant conversations about attendance and they're working with the family to try to improve the child's attendance, the families are starting to have trust in them. So although the conversation about attendance or bad attendance might not be what you want to talk about, we have seen some good come out of those conversations and parents feeling a little bit more connected to schools. And you heard earlier about the cohorts. We have Greer and Red Hill, and I also attend those sessions as Cohort One that's facilitated by EAB, that where we're able to work with schools and administrators and teachers from around the country. And we're talking about attendance, we're talking about the incentives and interventions. And what we have found is that it's just, it's been really positive to be able to brainstorm with people around the country who are having some similar issues. And we are excited about starting Cohort Two in April. Again, that cohort will include Woodbrook and Dr. Haas and Dr. Kaiser allowed me to hire an hourly person to help with attendance, so that that young lady will be a part of that cohort as well. But she is working right now, working with schools. So, and then the buyback program is something that the state has just rolled out, and we jumped on it. Our students have an opportunity to buy back up to 15 days, K through 12. And our elementary students would need to have, I think it's two hours, it's two hours of instruction outside of normal school hours. For every two hours, they will earn back a day. And for our secondary students, it's three, it's three hours, and they will earn back a day. So what's exciting about that is that we're able to get students back in front of instruction and instruction that they've missed. The goal is to hit this really hard right after the break, because we just got the information, I don't know, maybe two weeks ago. So we've been working with schools to try to craft that program and start it up after spring break. And Dr. Kaiser mentioned this, so I don't know if it's much on here that you haven't already heard, but in terms of communicating with the community, yes, Bright Arrow messages, we send out attendance nudges in some of our communications. And those are just thoughts and ideas about, and statements about the importance of school and attending school on a daily basis. We've had positive video messages, like a PSA made by people in the community that we believe many of our students know, and those have been popular. We are continuing with those as well. We do have a website where parents can go to. I think one of the things that I want to do, though, with the website, because I think sometimes with some of our parents, if they have to click a lot, they might not get to what we want them to get to. So for next year, I want to try to make sure that on the first page of the webpage, that there's some type of link right to the attendance page. Because I think that's important, and hopefully, we can make that happen. But we do have a website, and I think it's informative, but I think if the parents have to click more than two or three times, we might create a situation where people are not seeing it, who we want to see it. So, and there was a community session hosted for families, and we just were able to purchase posters, flyers, and magnets. The posters have been sent out to the schools. The flyers are going to be used for backpack mail, and they're going to be sent to the elementary schools, and the magnets will be sent to all of the schools for them to use at programs to give out to their families. They can put them on the front desk where families come in, they can take one. But each one of those has a message about the importance of attendance. We're just trying to kind of make attendance and our efforts go viral. That's the goal. And I think now we have three of our principals, first principal will come up.
Yes. So now we get to the best part of the presentation, and that's hearing what's going on in the schools to positively impact this issue. We are happy to spotlight three of our schools and school leaders here with us this evening to share the great work they have been engaging in this year around attendance and chronic absenteeism. And first, we have Mr. Steve Saunders, Principal of Greer Elementary School. And then after Steve, we have Ms. Ashby Johnson, Principal of Journey Middle School. And then lastly, we have Mr. Derek Bonham, Principal of Albemarle High School.
Good evening. Steve Saunders, and I'm proud to be the principal here at Greer, and I'm happy to talk to you about chronic absenteeism and the things that we've been doing to reduce it. And I think we're already off the rails here, Dr. Kaiser. Is this the slide that you want us to be sharing? Go on to our slide. Great. We've seen a great reduction here. So we know that reducing absenteeism and increasing the students' attendance at school is something that everybody at our school has a role in, and so we've been doing a lot of things at the whole school level. And so we've been working with our colleagues in the central office as well as with EAB and developing things on our own to come up with strategies and things at the whole school level. So some of the things we've been doing, as they referenced earlier, even little simple flyers that we've created in English and Spanish on when to come to school. We've created magnets to our families with our phone numbers on it, the times of day that we're in school. We send out every Sunday a highlight of the week, days we do have school, what events are going on. We send out events to families, kind of highlighting things that are coming up. We send those out as digital copies to families on Sunday as well. One of the other things we did this year was we created a letter, and for all 530 students in our building, we calculated their current attendance rate, and we sent that to families and just said, "Here's where you are right now," and talked about the supports that we had in place that we could provide to them. We also do have an attendance team that meets weekly. It's about eight of us. We go line by line for students and looking at patterns and things that we need to do to support them. One of the things that the division did two years ago that we continue to benefit in this area for chronic absenteeism is the use of the school vans. And so I feel like daily, we're driving two to three shuttle services out to go pick up kids who have either missed buses or parents don't have transportation or some other life event has happened, that they didn't ride the bus. And so we go and get kids and bring them to school and also take them home. And so we do that, we talk about that in the attendance team meetings about which kids we need to be supporting that way. One of the things that we're particularly proud of is that we've seen decreases in our chronic absenteeism rate overall, and we see that that's only going to get better through the state's flexible buyback construction program. So what we did was we identified about 80 students out of our 530 that are sitting in one of two categories. One, they are already over the threshold for chronic absenteeism for the school year. So they've already hit 18 days or more, but they statistically are sitting in an area where we can buy back the time. So for me, I cut that off at 30 days because we can buy back 15, so we can get them to 17, so under 18. So they're sitting in that group, or they're sitting at 13 absences, 14 absences. They're sitting in a group that we're trying to proactively bank time for them in case something happens, they get really sick, and they tip over in April or May and it's too late to catch them up. We've already banked the time. So that's about 80 students for us that we're trying to either catch, to buy back the time for, or proactively bank time towards. We're doing that through an incentive program we're starting right after spring break, free clubs for enrichment and activities after school for kids, where we're going to be providing them for this group. We started the attendance for this group here to try and get them to do one of two things. One, come back and certainly buy back school, but more importantly, we're trying to give them yet another incentive to come to school. Would they find a hook? Would they be excited about coming and doing ceramics with the art teacher after school? Would they be excited about doing a math club? Would they be doing some of these things that get them a hook to come to school and want to come even more than they've been doing? And so we're really excited about that as we go into the spring break and into the rest of the school year. So we're seeing some good movement with our school. We're not all the way where we want to be, certainly, but we've seen some really good improvement. We're already capturing some kids that we know that were chronically absent last year that we've already caught back that they aren't. And we know that the real reason behind this is that we have to give them the opportunity to learn, and we have to get them in the building so that we can have those relationships with them and also have them get to learn. And we know that that only, at the elementary level, is critical to set them up for success, and then also it compounds over time. And we also are trying to do our best to set up our students as they transition into middle school. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ashby Johnson.
All right. Good evening. My name is Ashby Johnson. I'm the principal at Journey Middle School. And just like Steve, I'm going to just share a few highlights of things that we've been doing. We really started off strong in July with our attendance team viewing the EAB presentation, much of what you just saw today. And then we actually developed from that, we developed 20-day cycle plans that we've been using. And so literally, when we got to pre-service week, we had laid out week one of what we're doing. We were going to present, we presented to the whole staff around chronic absenteeism and provided updates and ways that we were going to tie in the relationship mapping work that you all heard about earlier. So we're in year two of doing that with our homeroom students this year. Our growl teacher, which is homeroom, is making the first contact, or was making the first contact with all of their students. And so they called home the first week of school, just welcoming students back to school, talked about how excited they were to see them. We, again, the after-school tutoring and Saturday school for buyback is in the works. We actually started our first Saturday school this past Saturday. Our attendance team is fabulous. They have been a huge part of the presentations that we've done, the development of our 20-day plan cycles, our weekly data reviews, calls home and home visits. We're doing a lot of celebrations that are quarterly and weekly with pizza lunches and certificates. We're incentivizing, we're interviewing kids. At the beginning of the year, we interviewed a lot of kids who were chronically absent last year and they're not this year, so we're talking about what's different this year so we can learn from them and expand that. One of the best things that we are doing this year is we implemented Fun Friday Lunches, which any of you all are welcome to come to. The teachers don't have any lunch duty on Fridays, so the administrators and the counselors do all the lunch duties on Fridays. And we have music playing, we have a treat for the week. It could be a student has no tardies for the week, or they have had perfect attendance for the week or for the month. They actually come up on the stage, myself and two of our counselors are sitting there, and we check their record in Power School, give them some kind of Jaguar swag or Oreos or free pass to the dance, and they really, really love it. They love the recognition, they love that they get, that we're celebrating their growth, but also just how they're doing with attendance. So we're adding tardies in there as well as the daily. So we're adding tardies in there as well as the, uh, daily, um, daily attendance and the weekly attendance and monthly attendance. So that has some, been something that has been a pretty big hit for us this year that we're super excited about. So those are just some things that we're doing. Again, the 20-day cycles, we are just, every 20 days, we're reevaluating our data. We're celebrating the things that we have been really successful with. We're making adjustments to our plans based on that data. So it's really, uh, kind of progressing throughout the year. Um, we are seeing, uh, we are making really good progress. Um, we actually have some of our students who were chronically absent last year that have perfect attendance this year, which is amazing. So we're just celebrating them and lifting them up. Um, and, and we're really excited about the work that we've done. So, thank you. And Dara is going to talk about the high school.
Thank you, Ashby. Good evening, everybody. I'm Dara Bonham, Principal, Albemarle High School. Uh, I think one of the critical parts that's been mentioned a lot this evening is obviously the teamwork that's required from the teacher's side. Uh, want to talk a little bit about the, kind of the practical sense from, um, how we operate at the high school level. Uh, with over 2,000 students, obviously it's a lot of students to navigate through and figure out the support that they need. We do run the weekly, uh, we call them student success meetings. They happen every week, uh, typically Mondays, uh, and that will be a team of similar what Dr. Turner had mentioned with counselors, administrators, SEL, uh, social workers. Um, we also have home community school intervention coordinators that both work, uh, some specifically on the, uh, EL side, but also some that work, um, with all of our students and those are critical people as well. I think, uh, an important part of those meetings, because we do it by grade level, so we'll have ninth grade, one week, 10th grade, 11th, 12th, et cetera, is that the old notion that you can't change what you can't measure. And I think that's looking at data every single time to ensure what that looks like. Uh, and those folks are really critical because they really dive into a lot of what the data looks like, but data is only one piece to it. Uh, the one position mentioned are home community school coordinators. Uh, they will go and do home visits. We've done hundreds of home visits throughout the course of the year. Uh, and they, and I like to use the word, um, partnership versus outreach. You know, outreach feels kind of a one-way, uh, type of direction where partnership really looks at trying to meet both ways in terms of where we're looking at student attendance. And so what we've tried to do as well is what you'll see in the one column to the left is identify through all these meetings, what are some commonalities that exist? Uh, when we go through truancy, there's a barriers worksheet that we all go through and that barriers worksheet has a lot of questions that we ask and it really tries to dig into the why. Cause I think that's, end of the day, um, that's really the, the most important question is the why. Why are students, in my case at the high school level, not connecting to school, right? Why are they not coming to school? Uh, and some of that really isn't always about all-day absences. Sometimes it's about period absences. Sometimes it's about morning absences. Sometimes it's afternoon. And so there are a lot of competing factors, especially, and we've noticed that, um, coming off of COVID, there's a lot of Maslow's that gets into what needs families and kids have. And so some of the things on the left that we identified, um, through a lot of just, uh, of this work is, um, there's a lot of mental health components that we've seen that require quite a bit of support in terms of what that looks like for students to feel comfortable back in school on a regular basis. Uh, a lot of medical diagnosis for different reasons, uh, getting to school and that could be transportation, it could be walking to school, it could be just how perhaps they have other obligations at home, they're not getting up in time, they're missing buses, things of that nature. And, and, and getting to school is a pretty important part, obviously, of the school day. Uh, and some of that's getting there later than they need to be. So some of that's maybe period attendance related. Uh, I think a critical part at the high school level especially is the poor academic performance. Uh, cause I think these, we look at these through the symptomatic piece, they're all symptoms, right? Attendance is a symptom, um, or something's a symptom of attendance and poor attendance. And the academic side, I think is critical because if you think about it, if you missed three weeks of your trigonometry or your Algebra I class, it's not something you can just roll back in and then feel comfortable. So while we do all the work to get a student back in, I think that's just the start. Then the next part is what do we do to get them to be academically successful again and feel success within the classroom, which is just critical. Uh, other factors, looking at things like teen parenting has increased, um, and teen parenting looks at two things. One is I'm watching a sibling and others is we've had more, uh, young people that are having their own children. And that's been an increase in the last couple of years as well. And those are a lot of factors that we have to navigate through, uh, the family work obligations, uh, poor connection to school. You know, the surveys we do through Panorama talk about sense of belonging. That's a piece we always try to connect with and why do some students feel like they're not as connected? And sometimes that's an academic connection, sometimes that's an athletic connection or sometimes that's a band connection, whatever it happens to be. Uh, I look at some of the things that we did with our inter-mural program. We started for the first time at Albemarle last year where, uh, we used to cut in soccer and we ended up taking, uh, close to 50 students that normally would have gotten cut. Many of those were students that, uh, were in our English language program and they ended up, uh, becoming part of a program and become a part of school and they were become part of the community and they had incentive to be back in school. So what are other ways to make connection to school, certainly academically and beyond? Um, the piece that, uh, I'll leave with is the, the buyback, which is part of what the state has put in recently to say that if you have these criteria, you can earn back your chronic absentee days, so to speak. Um, we've done buyback at all three high schools since the last couple of years and buyback is related at the high school level because the principal, and this is all in policy, has the discretion to deny credit if you've missed more than 10 school days or 10 periods, I should say, within a class period. And while that's kind of been in the policy for quite some time, it's just recently become enforced because we realize the correlation between attendance and coming and, and academic performance. And within that, um, students realize that when they're missing 10, 12, 15, 20, uh, class periods, that has an impact on their grade. So we started buyback sessions again last year, we've increased them this year. Uh, we, we hold them Thursday afternoons, four to six, and we hold them Saturday mornings, nine to noon. Uh, we've held, um, about 16 or so, so far. Uh, and the key to that, it's not just you're coming in earning time. You know, I've missed a bunch of days, so I'm going to earn time. But we want that to be purposeful. So there is a, uh, pretty strong correlation for the students who are coming and what their academics look like as well, because many of them are behind, it could need some support. So we've paired them with tutors. We've paired them with UVA tutors. Uh, Ms. Early, I think who was here earlier, she has her NESBI tutors that work with us. We have peer tutoring programs with teenagers, working with other, their peers. Uh, we've had, uh, over 200 students have already attended. Uh, many of those are repeat students that will come in and then they recover absences, right? That allow them, uh, to get under the radar of the requirement of the 10, but they also, uh, along the way, get academic support and get, I, I call it resuscitation, right? Like you get to a point, you've missed three weeks of Algebra I, we have to get you back into Algebra I, so when you go back into class, you're feeling successful and then feeling the accomplishment, which gets back to one of the reasons why students aren't coming. So I think it's an overall process. There's a lot of people in the mix and doing that, but I think having some of these, um, opportunities beyond the classroom as well supports getting students back. And I think we've seen that to help, uh, decrease some of the chronic absenteeism that we had at the school. So, thank you.
All right. And thanks to, um, Steve and Ashby and Dara for your presentation and all of the great work that you do with your students, your staff and your families each and every day. So thank you, we appreciate you. The Office for Community Engagement, um, our strategic initiatives aim to enhance, um, school administration effectiveness, foster equity and expand community engagement. Um, we will bolster school administrators by providing additional support and facilitating teacher communications, um, addressing chronic absenteeism with families. Collaboratively, we will engage with the Equity Center and other key health partners to determine ways in which we as a community can better meet the health needs of our students and families. And then we intend to implement, um, and go after community and schools programming, um, addressing social issues and enhancing educational and enrichment opportunities for our students and families. And then furthermore, we plan to apply for, um, 21st Century Community Learning Center grants, um, aiming to broaden access to after-school and enrichment programmings. And then additionally, um, the Office for Community Engagement will continue to collaborate with the Albemarle Foundation for Education, the AFE, to identify and engage business and community partners willing to contribute their talent, time and treasure or resources as school champions. Um, the school champion initiative will not only provide invaluable support to our schools, but also strengthen the bond between our educational institutions and the community. And that is our presentation and we are open to questions.
That was a lot of material. Thank you all. Um, I, I guess for the principals, I mean, Ashby, you said, um, you talked to students about why they've come back. I mean, we, we've pretty, um, clearly diagnosed all the range of reasons why kids don't want to come or can't come. But why have, what have you done? What do they say when you ask them why they've come back? And, um, I guess when we reach, do the reach out, and this is for everybody, the reach out to the students, do, we put together, I mean, if they're not coming because of academic failures and, or challenges, and I think Dara talked to this, or emotional, you know, bullying or emotional issues, do you put together a package? Yeah, I guess your team works on that. I'm not even sure what I'm asking, but I think you probably know what I'm asking even if I don't articulate it well.
Yeah, I think, I think I know. So the students have shared a variety of things in terms of why their attendance has improved. So some has just been that they feel more connected to the school. Some has been that they did have mental health issues that have been resolved, um, or not resolved, but supported, uh, through counseling or through trusted adults, trusted relationships with adults at the school. Um, some of them feel like they have, uh, connected to an activity at school that they can be involved in. So it just kind of depended on the, on the student. But we did kind of divide out, based on our data, we did divide out the kids that had, uh, shown a lot of growth in their attendance and just interviewed them one-on-one so we could see if we could get some trends or find some things that were really working. And, and what we learned was that it just really varied depending on the kid, which we thought going into that, but we weren't, you know, we weren't a hundred percent sure. But, um, it, those are some of the things that they came up with. In terms of your second question, I think really creating a, a very individual and specific plan for a student based on where they are, kind of meeting them where they are and thinking about growth and progress and where, where they need to go. Um, and so those plans look different. It could be a check-in, check-out with the student. It could be that they need a break halfway through third period. It could be that they need a, a weekly goal-setting meeting with a counselor, you know, just, just depends. So those are really individualized and I think that's when we can get pretty creative. Um, and again, it's different for each student based on what they need, but it really, it really, um, helps us get to know the student, find out what they need. The students are able to share with us too, what, what they feel like they need to be successful. So they really have a voice in that plan too. And then getting the families involved with that, with the planning. Does that help?
Very much so. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. This was a lot of information, um, and definitely really insightful. I do have, um, a few notes and questions. One is kind of centered around, uh, the messaging and I know that, um, the first presentation talked about, you know, guilt and blame and things like that. And I, and we do get a lot of emails, especially when those nudges go out, um, the texts, um, that oftentimes they seem to correlate, I don't even know if it's planned, but when there's a, um, teacher work day or something like that. And so we'll send out an email saying how important attendance is and then schools close the next day. And so then it, it seems contradictory, even though that's not our intention. Um, and so I know we've gotten a couple of emails from people who have been frustrated by that because they feel like it's opposite messaging. Um, so I'm just throwing that out there, that if we're trying to, um, really communicate how important attendance is, maybe the timing of some of those. But also I do think that some of the letters that have gone home, I have two kids in full transparency that, um, are chronically absent. Um, and so the letters that come home have felt very, uh, blamy, for lack of a better word, um, um, which can be frustrating when we're trying to get our kids to school. So, um, I, it might be helpful to, um, maybe talk to some parents too about how that messaging is coming across and how it might encourage them to send their, you know, what would be more helpful in, in the wording of that message? But speaking of my two chronically absent kids, one is my senior, um, at Western. And so his freshman year was COVID year. So he never had the buy-in and that's what we were talking about. He was never there. He was, you know, doing virtual learning and so that has had implications for the last four years. Um, so I do think that that is really important and that's something that I've talked a lot about. And it leads me to think that, you know, um, really catching the freshmen especially when they're starting high school and maybe the sixth graders too, and really focusing on those kids, um, at the very beginning of starting those schools and getting that buy-in right away. Because I think, um, Jackson's teachers tried for the last couple of years, but once you got through that freshman year and they were, you know, it was really hard to catch them on the back end of high school. And so I tell you from personal experience, as much as my husband and I fought to have Jackson, you know, involved in school or whatever, um, not having that initial buy-in from his freshman year made it really difficult to have buy-in for those all four years. So, um, my other kid, who was chronically absent this year, was kind of a fluke thing. He had, um, a concussion from football and then he had strep. And so he missed two weeks of five days each and then we had a family vacation planned post-election to kind of reset as a family and we knew that he was going to miss five days. So that was 15 days in the first semester already. So he's been doing buyback at Henley, which has been great. And he signs up, he's able to do it during sting, um, because he's in algebra and Spanish and so he's buying back those classes. But what's frustrating about it is we just this week got a letter home, um, saying that he has his absences and he has no buyback, he hasn't done any buyback days, but he said that he's even banked days and he's done more than the 10. And so there's, um, some inconsistency in that communication. So if we weren't so on top of things as parents and knowing that he had bought those back, I would get this letter and think, oh my gosh, you know, he's got all these days to miss up, make up, he hasn't done it, but in reality, he's actually banked days. So I say that too, that, you know, it can, um, if, if we're wanting this to work effectively, we need to make sure that that, how we're tracking that buyback, um, how we're tracking these absences is consistent, um, and so that that messaging really resonates with the parents because, um, that could be incredibly frustrating for a parent, um, if it's not accurate. And, and it was very frustrating for him because he was like, mom, I've done it, I've done it, I've, I've gone to all my stings and, you know, he's a straight A student. And so, um, those are just two things that I wanted to, um, bring up on the communication side. I didn't know if you wanted to, and I had one other comment after that.
Appreciate the feedback and will definitely take your suggestions. Um, this, uh, was the first year of our implementation of the nudges and, um, the widespread communication. So we'll work with the communications team and we will look at these issues and make some adjustments.
Awesome.
Again, thank you.
Yeah, no, I think all of this is really important and I think that, you know, we're, it's all steps in the right direction and, um, I, I do see a lot of positive change. My last question had to do with the van that, um, they brought up about Greer and then I think Journey, um, and maybe Albemarle, so they had one too. I'm curious if that is something that's available to all of our schools and how we're using that with absenteeism? Because I, in all honesty, I'd never realized that that was an option for getting kids to school, um, especially in light of chronic absenteeism and, um, how we're using that and how we communicate. I'm just curious about it because that seems like it could be super helpful. And also how we're communicating with families that maybe don't speak English or, or aren't, easily accessible. I'm thinking a lot of our, like, English second language learners and things like that, that how we can get those kids to school.
Yeah, well, um, yes, each school has a van and I'm probably one of the administrators that works them very closely with the schools in terms of the attendance. And for, uh, some of our schools, um, kind of the, the, the number of times that the van will go out really depends on who they might have available to leave work to drive. So some schools that have more staff, they may have a few more people free at certain times to make those runs. But, but the van is there. And But, but the van is there, and it is available. And
Are families aware of this? Because, I mean, I, you know, not that my kids would necessarily need to use that resource, but as a whole, ACPS parents are, and what is the process for a parent or somebody to say, hey, I can't get my kid to school, can you come pick them up? Or they missed the bus? Like, do we have an operating procedure in place for each of those schools? And how are we making sure that we're catching, is it an equitable resource to all of our families?
The principals have made those connections with the school community. But in terms of how frequent, there's no standard operating procedure around it because the principals don't want to promise something that they can't deliver. And we have some children, for instance, I used to be the principal at Monticello, family lives at the base of Afton. It's pretty difficult for, for the principal to have someone leave school for hour, or hour and a half. So they just don't want to tell families something that they can't follow through with. So, but as much as the schools can, as when they have someone free, they're, they're trying to do it. It's, it's a little easier for the schools in the, in the urban ring. But it's not something that's been promised because they don't want to say something that, that they can't deliver.
That was, just, just a quick follow-up. But the, the vans were purchased from pandemic relief funds. That was one of the one-time purchases that we made for all the elementary and middle schools. And their initial request was around being able to have students stay after school for extra time and support. And it perked up from elementary schools. And as Dr. Turner pointed out, the principals have it as a resource. In the past, they might have gone out in their own car, or had a staff member go out in a car to pick up students that had missed the bus, or maybe they were chronically absent and just not coming in. And we've had a lot of positive feedback from the schools around the vans as a tool to build relationships, and also a stronger connection with the families. I'm sure Steve has mentioned, he's been out driving the van. You know, all of them get out there and use it, so.
Right, yeah. In terms of, we do, we work with, with the ESAL department in terms of getting the letters translated. And I mean, everything that we come out with, we try, we try to get over to them as fast as we can. So that's, that's, that's what we're doing.
Really, you know, the interesting thing too with the EAB, one of the things, I went to the roundtable that they do last spring, and this was the topic. But the, the, one of the things the EAB talked about was, it wasn't even necessarily a phone call from the teacher, that if the teacher could text them, they actually prefer texting. And so one of the things they've provided is, they provided like a little script that you can use with your text messaging. And parents, you know, it's just, we miss John today. It'd be really great, you know, please reach out, let us know what's going on. And just trying to get in, there's the official letters, they're going to happen because a lot of them are required by code. But it's what you do proactively before that letter, before the first negative. As you know, you mentioned, it's very formal, it doesn't feel great to get these attendance letters. But if we can have teachers use the technology tools that'll, that'll translate, you know, like our, the Bright Hour messages and some of the other technology that they use, to get in the interim, the gap between the attendance issue and those first official notifications come out, there's a great return on investment with that. And so that requires extra effort. But texting is, as much as texting can be, I guess, irritating, parents actually do prefer in lieu of phone calls. And teachers find it easier to do too, because it's making cold phone calls to families that you don't have a talk to before is difficult. And so I'm glad we're able to do that.
And all our teachers have access to the technology to do that?
They can, they text from their computers. So, yeah, that's what they do. That's, they, when they're sending out Bright Hour, they would use their computer to text. So I just want to thank Sure.
Can you come to the mic?
Yeah. And while you're coming up, I just really want to thank our EAB partners. This was, this is like how it should work, that we go, we learn about the research, we, they really do national landscape research, find out what the best practices are. And this is how it should work. You go to the sessions, you learn about it. They run these, these cohorts that you've talked about, which I think were, are great, because we're all learning as we go. And then it hits the schools, they're practicing it. And then you saw in every slide that Dr. Karlock showed the dip, how it's starting to come back down again. And I just think this is an example of why we want to use best practices and find out what's working in other places.
The quick note I wanted to make about the text messaging, we're finding that parents can copy the text into their translator, because it's kind of impossible to translate for every language our parents are speaking. So that's a good way for, through the, they're doing it with the emails and the text messaging. And then schools are automating the text message. So you have that preset, it will fill the student's name in, we have a set, you can have it set for two days, again, and four days. So that cuts down on the time and the language barrier, plus adding graphics. So that the green light, red light, thumbs up, thumbs down, all of that is helping with the language barriers as well. So I just wanted to add that.
I had a quick question around special education data. I may, might have missed it. Did we, do we, did we have include special education data on absenteeism in the presentation?
Yes.
We did? Okay.
Yeah. Apologies.
I also really wanted to thank all of you for your work and also for all of this information. I'm the one who asked for the absenteeism work session. And so I really appreciated all this information. A couple of takeaways that I have are, you know, you're talking a lot about teamwork, and it seems like it's not siloed, it's a lot of parts of the school working together, a lot of departments working together. And, you know, that is great. I feel like we have been siloed for a long time. And this is really great working together to really put supports around the children. So I really appreciate that and seeing the progress that it's made. Part of that progress, or I don't know if our huge spike, we had a little bigger spike than the state did last year. And that also was a time when we had a lot of transportation issues. So I don't know if that correlates or if that's causal or whatever. But it just reminds us that, you know, all of the parts of our division are really important to educating the kids. So transportation, all the work that you're doing too. And that's also a plug for bus drivers. We were at the community breakfast this morning, and Dr. Haas made a plug for anyone who wanted to apply to become a bus driver. It's a really good way to, you know, do a good thing in your community. So plug for that. I also wanted to note that I think, for me, my takeaway is, I've always sort of thought of excused and unexcused absences differently, but they both affect learning. So that's something that, you know, Dara, you said, well, you know, we're coming to realize that, it seems obvious, but we're coming to realize the effects. And I think that's something that's important for parents to hear too, and important for our community to hear. And certainly, myself as a parent, I was learning that here in this presentation. So I really appreciate that. So I just thank you very much for all of your work on this and all this information.
And for staying so late.
And for staying so late. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that wraps us up for School Division Work Session. We do have one bit of other business. We were lax in coming out of closed session. We had a motion to make. So, Dr. Akov?
Yes. I move that the board accept the RIF, I'm sorry, Reduction in Force Protocol as presented to the board in closed session.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Akov and seconded by Mr. Page. Can we have a roll call vote on that, please?
Ms. Spillman?
Yes.
Dr. Berlin?
Yes.
Mr. Graham Page?
Yes.
Dr. Akov?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Pace?
Yes.
Ms. Allen Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Chair Lee?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay. And with that, with no other business, we are out. Thank you very much.